Do you see? Miss McCormick. Hold up a three. Nine threes, go fish.
I got six.
Dead on it.
I'd like to call the December PCOSN City School Board Meeting to order. And Sophie, take it away, please.
Harris Cottingham will lead us in the pledge. He is the son of Kelly and John Cottingham. He's in Mrs. Atwood's kindergarten class, and his favorite subject is playing intervention games. Harris loves to ride bikes with his dad.
Please stand for allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What a cheer squad down here.
That was best.
That was wonderful.
That was the longest, most enthusiastic pledge I've ever been a part of. You guys did a great job.
Andrea Wilder will provide the inspirational reading. Andrea is also a student in Mrs. Atwood's kindergarten class. Andrea is the daughter of Marie Collins and Andre Wilder. She loves to get on the computer and play games. Andrea's favorite subject in school this year is literacy. She will read lyrics from a song by Jill Jackson Miller and Cy Miller titled "Let There Be Peace on Earth."
"Let There Be Peace on Earth," by Jill Jackson Miller and Cy Miller. Let peace begin with me, let this be the moment now. With every step I take, let this be my solemn vow, to take each moment and live each moment with peace eternally. Let there be peace on earth, and let it begin with me.
Very nice. Next up is our student presentation. Students, if you could please stay for a few minutes after you complete your presentation. We're going to take a short break so that we can come out and talk with you. Our student presentation tonight is "The Reindeer Poki" by Ms. Atwood's kindergarten class from PCOSN Primary School. They're under the direction of Mrs. Poto. Ms. Atwood's class just finished performing this song along with other kindergarten classes last evening when they presented their holiday concert. And parents, just in FYI, this presentation will be on the website, so you can send that link out to other family and friends. Very well done, boys and girls. Did a great job. Thank you very much, Ms. Atwood and Ms. Poto. Do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
We do not this evening.
Thank you. Next, I would like to call up Ms. McCormick from the PCOSN Education Foundation as well as Dr. Cataldo.
Good evening. My name is Judy McCormick, and I am the president of the PCOSN Education Foundation. And Steve was so worried about the stool back here that the children used. But the older I get, the shorter I get, so maybe next year if I come back, I'll have to use the stool as well. Ms. Poto, your kids did a great job. I don't know where you are, I can't find you, but a super, there you are. Super dawg. You guys were terrific. I'll bet Santa Claus is going to come visit every one of you, don't you think? Yes. Well, I'm here to make a fantastic presentation, but before I do, I want to tell you a little bit about the PCOSN Education Foundation. We are a fundraising group here in PCOSN for the PCOSN school system. We have two major events every year. One is in October, and hopefully some of you have participated in our 5K run, our two-mile walk. And this year, it was our second annual, and we raised, after expenses, we cleared about $19,000. So I can't tell you how wonderful that is. There's another event that's held in March at the PCOSN Yacht Club, and it's kind of a gala affair. We have wonderful food, and we have a silent auction, a live auction. And the theme last year was Las Vegas, and this year it's going to be some kind of casino event with palm trees and everything else. So it sounds like it's going to be a fun time. That event raised, after expenses, last year $20,000. So we can thank you, the citizens and residents of PCOSN, the businesses of PCOSN, who, when we knock on your doors, you say yes to sponsorships, yes to donations, yes to raffle items. We cannot thank you enough, because without you, we couldn't do much for the school system. Now, what we do with the money we raise is we have classroom grants for teachers. You know, the school board used to fund some of this, but with all the drastic budget cuts, unfortunately, that's one of the things that had to go. So it was perfect timing for us to get in gear and do what we could to help the teachers, to enhance their teaching curriculum and to make it a little more fun for the students in the process. And then we get, we give scholarships to students, graduating seniors every year. And I can tell you how much we did last year. Since 2010, we have given $83,500 in PEF and PEF managed scholarships to graduating seniors from the high school. We have given $78,045 in teacher classroom grants and $8,100 in student grants. And as I said, it's all because of the people in this community. I worked in the system for 26 years, and I cannot tell you how proud I am to be able to say that. And if you, parents, most of you are young parents, if you don't know how wonderful this system is yet, hopefully, as your kids progress through the system, you will feel the way I do, that it is one of the best school systems in the country. We have some of the best teachers in the country. And we all need to feel really proud and feel very fortunate to live in PCOSN and to have Dr. Parrish as our leader. She is absolutely phenomenal. So that's why we're here, to talk about PEF. And because we had some money, Dr. Parrish said the high school needed some iPads. And she was able to get some money somewhere, I don't know where. And she said if we could match it, they would buy thirty, the school board would buy 30 new iPads for the high school, and if we could match it, we would contribute 30 iPads. And together, the high school will get 60 iPads. So I am here to present to Dr. Michael Cataldo a check, of course, this is the fake check, for $11,370 from the PCOSN Education Foundation to help fund 30 iPads in some mysterious place. Dr. Parrish was able to get another $11,370, and so together we can buy 60 iPads for the high school students, so.
Thank you very much, Ms. McCormick. We, the board, and everybody in PCOSN can't say enough about what PCOSN, PCOSN PEF does for, for the community. With that being said, yes, the community does give, but it takes somebody like you with a vision and the initiative and the drive and the organizational skills to pull those things together, to get those funds. And the students are direct recipient of that, and they're the ones who benefit, and I know you know that, and that's what keeps you motivated. But on behalf of the board, I would really like to thank PCOSN Education Foundation. Thank you, thank you very much for your time. With that, we will take a brief intermission.
You're welcome. Thank you. You're fine, don't worry. Oh, don't worry. Thanks for coming.
All right. Next up is our presentations and reports, and we'll kick that off with financial update from Mr. Bowen.
Good evening, Dr. Carter, students and members, and Dr. Parrish. Let me begin my finance report this evening with presenting you with the results of our 2014 annual audit. On the DAS, you have two audit reports. The first is the comprehensive financial report. And for reporting purposes, the financial data for the city and the school division are included together. Let me direct you, though, to the last page, the very last page of the document. It's page 108, and this is the results of the, of the audit. I'm pleased to report that there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified, nor any findings or questioned costs related to our federal programs. So this is an excellent audit report, one of the best that you can get, or the best that you can get. The second audit report is a report on school activity funds. This report here. Each school has an activity account, and it's used to deposit the proceeds from things like fundraisers, field trips, and student clubs and organizations. These accounts are managed at the school level and are audited every year. Again, I am pleased to report that there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified in this audit. So while I deliver this great news, I can't take credit for it. These excellent audit reports are the results of the hard work of all PCPS employees. In particular, I would like to thank the school bookkeepers, the principals and assistant principals, my finance staff, Dr. Colley, Dr. Cataldo, Dr. Feldman, and Mr. Pappas. To all, I say thank you for the excellent work that you do on behalf of PCPS. On the subject of budget, in November, the General Assembly held a special session to consider changes to the FY 2015 budget. And as I mentioned in my November report, K-12 education was not expected to be impacted. The most likely scenario that we would see would be a fund switch that would occur out of any legislative action. So we would possibly see a shifting, an increase in lottery fund revenues and a decrease in general fund revenues to offset that increase. And that's exactly what happened. In February, the General Assembly and the governor approved an increase in lottery and literary fund appropriations of $43.1 million and a corresponding decrease in general fund revenues of that same amount. And what we'll see, as if you recall the count tool that I showed you in November, there were textbook funds and summer remedial funds in the SOQ funding category. Those specific funding, funds will be shifted to now lottery dollars. For 2016, the governor releases his proposed budget for 2016 in the morning. We're anxiously, anxiously awaiting to see if his proposals include any cuts to K-12 education. As soon as we know that information, any impact to K-12 education, and more specifically PCPS, we will share that information with the board. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions or comments there? So the net increase slash decrease to funding was zero based on, you said there was an increase in the lottery funding, but it was offset by a decrease in the general fund revenue?
Correct. There was no net loss of funding in 2015. The General Assembly just appropriated more lottery revenue, proceeds from lottery fund and literary fund revenues, and then offset that increase with a cut in general fund revenue. So they just did a fund switch.
Has anybody seen anything publicized where the state uses the increase in lottery funds to show that they're increasing funding of public education? Okay. All right. Anybody else? Thank you, sir. And Mr. Pappas with the operations update.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, school board, Dr. Parrish. Well, as we all know, the break is close upon us, and everyone, students and staff, are looking forward to it. We too in maintenance are looking forward to it, and custodial services, it gives us a great opportunity to get in and do a bunch of things while the space is less occupied. In the area of maintenance, we're also going to be conducting our annual fire inspections in all four schools over the break. Per Virginia code, we have to complete two lockdown drills, one in September and one in January in all four schools. Those dates have already been selected by principals, the police department's on board. We'll be conducting those upon return. In the area of food service, we are currently working through the off-site, they're off-site, we're onsite, federal food service program review. It used to happen once every five years, now it happens once every three years. So they've sent us down a myriad of documents and paperwork we have to fill out, respond before we leave for break. They take that back, assess it, and then they come down the last week of January, and for the week that they're here, they're looking at everything they saw and then looking to see that we're doing it, and check everything that we do within the food service program. Staff have already been involved in phone interviews, and we are preparing for the onsite visit. In the area of maintenance, staff will utilize the break to facilitate important preventative maintenance activities, such as the big air conditioning chiller and water tower that allows us to air condition in the high school. It's a great time for us to break it down, clean it, and put it all back together. And then lastly, I'd just like to mention that working with IT, maintenance now has the ability to remote into the schools, even from home, when there's a problem and we hear about it. Saves us maybe from having to come out. We can quickly grab our computer, look into the computing system that controls the heating, ventilation, and in some cases, lighting at the high school, middle, and elementary school. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Yeah, I have one. You said they come and they inspect for the food services, that, who is the "they"?
It's a federal review, and the Department of Education actually sends down individuals that have been specially trained from Virginia to do a thorough analysis of everything from menus, recipes, production sheets, compliance with nutritional guidelines, free and reduced, the full gamut.
Thank you. And you're having to do that now every three years as opposed to every five years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, anybody else have? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Pappas, and thanks to the food service workers and custodial staff for all they do. Ms. Colley with the instructional update. I apologize. Dr. Colley?
It's all good.
You earned it.
Good evening, Dr. Carter, members of the board, and Dr. Parrish. Of the fun stuff tonight, I think I get to share some of the great things our students are doing in our schools. We take seriously the mission to help our students participate and contribute meaningfully in the community and the world they live in. And during this season of giving and Thanksgiving, it seems fitting to share some of the service projects that our students are doing as part of their curricula and then outside of school as well. And our youngest students know that you're never too young to learn what service is all about. At the primary school, students in every grade have been making cards throughout the school year to send to the troops overseas. Beginning in January, the students at the primary school may also donate 25 cents on Fridays to wear a hat during the school day. And the funds they collect will be donated to SOW for Comfort, and this is an organization that provides free adaptive clothing and comfort accessories to all wounded service members from all branches of the military. At the elementary school, students begin participating in clubs with a service-oriented focus, and some examples include the Cake Kids, and they participated in a special trick-or-treat collection for UNICEF this year. The art club students participated in a service project called Empty Bowls to raise money for the Peninsula Food Bank. Students made clay bowls that were painted, fired, and then available for parents and staff to bid on in hopes of winning one of them. And the elementary school SCA sold candy grams this fall to collect money and also held a food drive for PAWS, a local shelter for homeless cats. Service at the middle school is also evident through the clubs. Students in the SCARE Club, and that stands for Students Concerned About Restoring the Environment, have recycled 168 large garbage bags full of recyclables, and they've also recycled 142 boxes this year. The Builders Club is also busy. They donated $200 to Heifer International to provide the following to people in need around the world: a pig, a flock of ducks, a share of rabbits, and a hope basket which provides eggs and protein for nourishment and boosts income through the sale of the extra eggs and offspring. As part of the Kiwanis Club Empty Stocking Fund, the Builders Club members filled 11 giant holiday stockings for children in need this month, and they plan to do a collection of items for the SPCA in the spring. Students in the National Junior Honor Society at the middle school are sponsoring the Holiday Pet Contest, and the proceeds will benefit Relay for Life. In the spring, these same members will bake treats for a bake sale to benefit Cystic Fibrosis Foundation and Cletez for Honduras. The middle school SCA participated in a food drive recently to help our local parish thrift stores pantry. They collected 834 items of food in only eight days. At PCOSN High School, the FCA collected 55 boxes for Operation Christmas Child to add to the Hampton Roads area collection of over 17,000 boxes. The Leo Club worked a car wash to provide funds to maintain and enhance Kids Island, and members also participated in the Diabetes Walk at York High School and raised over $900 for diabetes research. They've also prepared a holiday food basket for a family in the Transitions Program, and this is a program that aids families seeking to escape domestic violence. The Key Club has also been very busy at PCOSN High School this fall. So far, they have worked two car washes to earn money to support maintenance of Kids Island, helped with parking at all the schools' back-to-school nights, provided childcare at the primary school for back-to-school night, served as road marshals and water stop helpers at the PEF Run for the Bulls in October, provided concessions for sporting events and at the seafood festival, helped the PCOSN museum with Haunts of PCOSN, and served two Saturdays' bell-ringing for the Salvation Army. They're also not out of school on Friday because they're planning to come back this Saturday and work at the Christmas house, so that's the Key Club. And I'll close out with our Teens for Troops Club, because they sponsored Cookies Because We Care recently. This service project involves students and staff at all four of our schools and the school board office baking cookies for our local troops. This year, we had a total of 11,604 cookies, that's 967 dozen, to donate to the Langley Office Officer Spouses Club. This brings Picocin's nine-year total donation of cookies to 106,620 cookies for our local troops, and I'm sure that they will appreciate these home baked goods. So, these, and I had to cut this down, these examples are just a sampling of the many service projects that our schools are participating in this year. I think it's very clear that our students are becoming very civic-minded citizens, and I hope the board and the community will join me in commending them for their efforts to connect what they're learning in school to the community and to the world around them. And that concludes my update for the evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, comments there?
Breathtaking. That was a long list, and I'm very proud of our students and teachers.
Yes.
Did you say the Heifer?
Heifer International.
Heifer International.
Yes.
And they, now, they purchase these animals to give, is that right?
They do. They raise money, and then they purchase the different animals, and they know exactly which community it's going into and how it will support and sustain.
Okay. That's interesting. Somebody, have you heard of that before?
Very worthwhile organization.
That's very interesting. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Cass, could you take us through the consent agenda, please?
Sir, the consent agenda tonight includes the following four items that have been enclosed in the board packet: approval of financial reports, approval of personnel action, authorization to dispose of surplus property, and authorization to change appropriations in accordance with the attached requests.
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Thank you, sir.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve this consent agenda?
The vote is passed, seven to zero.
Thank you. And next up, there is a resolution concerning the funding of public education in Virginia
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
And could you call for a vote, please, Ms. Reimers? that we need to discuss.
Ms. Sydner?
Aye.
And it's kind of lengthy.
Ms. Rollins?
I've trimmed it down some, but I still think there are some highlights here, some things
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
that need to be said, so if you'll bear with me, I'm gonna hit some of those.
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Vote is pass, seven to zero.
This is a proclamation that says, "Whereas the General Assembly shall provide for a Thank you, ma'am. Other matters for consideration first is approval of the minutes of the special meeting system of free public elementary and secondary schools for all children of school age throughout from December 10th, which is enclosed. Do I have a motion to approve? the Commonwealth, and shall seek to ensure that an educational program of high quality
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
Could you call for a vote, please? is established and continually maintained."
Ms. Sydner?
Aye.
And that is from the Virginia Constitution, Article 8, Section 1.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Abstain.
"The General Assembly determines the manner in which funds are to be provided for the
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
cost of maintaining an educational program, meeting the prescribed standards of quality."
Aye.
The vote, motion is passed, vote is passed, six, one abstention.
Thank you. And next is approval of the minutes of the November regular meeting and work session, Article 8, Section 1 of the Constitution of Virginia states that "the Board of Education which was enclosed. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
And the second? and the General Assembly find that the quality of education is dependent upon the provision
Second.
And could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Sydner?
Aye.
of an appropriate work environment, benefits and salaries necessary to ensure the availability
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
of high-quality instructional personnel, the appropriate learning environment designed
Aye.
to promote student achievement, quality instruction that enables each student to become a productive and educated citizen of Virginia and the United States of America, and the adequate commitment of other resources. In keeping with this goal, the General Assembly shall provide for the support of public education." We are simply, this proclamation is simply asking the state to meet its responsibilities that they have outlined. K-12 funding reductions have reduced K-12 funding from 35% of the general fund in fiscal year 2009 to below 30% in 2014. Reductions have been carried out through damaging policy changes quite often since fiscal year 2009. The voters of Virginia in 1987 approved the establishment of a state-operated lottery for the purpose of providing funding for public education, and further approved a Virginia constitutional amendment in 2000 which required lottery proceeds to be distributed to localities to spend for public education purposes. Instead of providing additional resources for public education, however, 100% of lottery proceeds now supplant rather than augment general fund revenues to support public education. And we just heard Mr. Bowen allude to that just a few minutes ago. Localities have paid for the increased cost of education required by state mandates. Often, these mandates are unfunded. Localities budgeted $3.55 billion in fiscal year 2013 above their state-required local effort to maintain the actual cost of public education. The number of at-risk students in Virginia schools has significantly increased to the point where more than one-third of K-12 students are now free lunch eligible, and 7% are now reduced-price lunch eligible, thereby increasing the need for more personnel and material resources to help them. We believe our state's future prosperity relies on a high-quality education system. Now, therefore be it resolved that Cosson City School Board and its division superintendent in conjunction with the Virginia School Boards Association and the Virginia Association of School Superintendents call upon the Virginia General Assembly to immediately increase the state's share of funding for public education to the level of quality that is prescribed by them and the standards of quality and expected by all of the Commonwealth citizens." Now, that's a mouthful, and typically with these resolutions, I will hit just a few But with this one, there was so much in here, and I think it's come to a point where we need to be shouting, basically, and trying to get their attention, because they are defunding us right into, you've seen the program cuts, we're not able to offer each year some of the courses that these students need to take that fits their schedule nicely. They're having to wait a year to take, for example, AP Chemistry, those type courses. We have cut the career and occupational education courses that we offer here on-site at the school, with the school system. That is primarily done now through New Horizons. Staff has been cut. So, the proclamation, I'm interested to hear what anyone else has to say about it.
Well, Chairman Carter, it's a shame that we have to put out a resolution asking the legislature and our elected folks to do what they already said they would outline to do. So, you're right, we need to shout. And this is, I guess, our organized shout. It is a shame that it's come to this, but this is a good resolution.
Personally, I think it outlines, I like the fact, first of all, that it outlines from the Virginia Constitution what is required of the government to provide for public education. And it goes on to say, basically, you're not doing what it is that you're supposed to be doing for public education. And we're feeling it. Every time we go in there, every time budget year comes up, these people are struggling to, "Where can I cut now?" And it needs to end. Our students deserve much more than what the state of Virginia is offering them in the way of public K through 12 education.
I know I'm technically not a member, but I'll tell you, as someone who spends seven hours at least a day in that school, it's critical that people realize we have four years to get into college. That means we have four years to take as many AP classes as we can, which means that the more that are offered, I promise you, there will be kids taking it, and I promise you that the more you offer, the more kids will take them. My sister's at Notre Dame, and when she got there, all of her friends there were shocked to see that she made it out of public education and into an elite private school. So, I think that really speaks well for Picocin, because we have kids getting into amazing schools, and the only way we can keep that happening is if they can take the courses that they're currently able, if not in the past, more able to take. So, that's me.
Thank you, Sophie. Mr. Chairman, can you share, especially with the people at home who drafted this, and maybe, Dr. Parrish, I don't know, how many other jurisdictions have adopted this resolution? So, we're not the only ones doing this.
No, this was actually drafted in concert with the Virginia School Boards Association, of which you all are a member, as well as the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, of which I am a member. Our hope is that 132 school divisions will pass it, that's how many we have in the state. I don't have the number to date that have passed it, but within the first week of it being sent to school boards, at least 10 school divisions had passed it because they happened to have meetings that first week. So, I anticipate that we'll see a large percentage of school boards passing it. I know some in our area have, I believe Chesapeake did that a week ago. So, you know, I'm thinking we'll see more and more of this rolling across the state as boards have school board meetings.
And I also would like to just say that there are many of our senators and delegates that are in agreement with us, and I definitely don't want this to be an adversarial-type thing, that it's more of a harmonious-type thing, because I believe it's being well-received by, especially some of our local delegates that I've talked to, that we're all in one accord across the state, trying to just get it back to the levels where we can continue to do the good work that we can do, because we cannot continue on the path that we're on without making some really, really drastic cuts that, we've already made some really significant cuts already over the last four, five, six years. But to those delegates and senators out there that are going to bat for us, thank you, and we appreciate everything that you're doing, and please call upon us if you need us. Anybody else? It's open for discussion. The one point that always sticks out in my mind is the bullet that Dr. Parrish has on a lot of her presentations that says, "The state spends more to take care of its criminals than it does its children." And that should resonate with people. And we're asking for community help. You're gonna have to call your legislatures, write them letters, email them. I know it takes time, but American Idol will still be on when you're done, I promise. Get it on a commercial break or something like that, but do it. Let them know that we're done, and they need to start shuttling some money back our way so that we can continue to send our kids to elite private universities, very well-prepared to be successful and go on into the world to represent Cosson. Anybody else, before we put it up for a vote? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
Could you call for a vote, please, Ms. Reimers?
Ms. Sydner?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Next up, approval of the PCPS Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 15 through 19.
Yes, after just talking about our poor budget situation, but each year, we do bring forward a capital improvement plan to you, and those that are watching from home should be seeing it on the screen. We have provided a reading file with this, and we did present this capital improvement plan to you at your work session last month. This is the same plan that we brought forward to you last year. We did have the opportunity to purchase a bus with the help of the city for the current year, so that was helpful for us in terms of our capital improvement plan. What, of course, is of great note is the center of it, where you see the comprehensive facility study completed. We did complete that study. We presented that to the school board last year, as well as to city council, and we continue to discuss issues related to the middle school in terms of its needs. What we are doing is leaving it in a holding pattern right now, in part because as we approach 2016, we know we're gonna have to have some discussion about the potential of consolidating schools if our enrollment decline continues as it is now projected to continue. If we do determine that we're gonna consolidate schools, it may impact the work that we plan to do on the middle school, because as you remember, when we talked about school consolidation, the School Consolidation Committee that met two years ago, which was made up of community members as well as city staff and school division staff, determined that the primary school would be the likely school for closure if we were to go to consolidate, but we might need to do some additional work then at the middle school. So, again, we are tracking our numbers. We won't make any decisions related to that for a couple more years, but the right thing to do is, as we look at the middle school, is to make sure we're making the right decisions. All the other items on your capital improvement plan here have been moved forward from last year. You will note that the primary school, we do anticipate needing HVAC work as well as roof work, just as any house that we own. After a number of years, we need to repair our roofs, and that is true of our school buildings as well. Under the high school, you see the track fixes, as well as an HVAC and roof work for that building, again, typical that we would need to do in our homes. We've gotta do those updates and repairs in our school buildings as well. And then you see the bus replacement schedule. We still have a number of buses that are quite old, over, we've got 20-year-old buses in our fleet. The replacement cycle that the state now funds is a 15-year replacement cycle. It went up from a 12-year replacement cycle. As you know, we often replace our cars sooner than 15 years, but that is where we are with our bus replacement cycle. So, with that said, I'm recommending approval of the CIP as it's being brought forward to you. As you know, we talked at the work session about the CIP. I've been in contact and had discussions with the city manager. So, we are in agreement that we should bring this forward. Then the city will incorporate into their CIP, knowing that we're in the holding pattern on the middle school, also knowing that we are challenged with our budget, as we've said on a couple of occasions this evening, as is the city. They've been helping us tremendously with our operating budget so that we could manage not to make as many reductions as we otherwise would have, so we know that likely items on the CIP may not be funded, those that are listed for the next fiscal year. But the community needs to recognize the issues that we face in terms of our facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve the CIP for fiscal year 15 through 19?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Any questions there? Comments? Thank you. Could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Sydner?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Vote is passed, seven to zero.
Next up, consideration of approval of the first reading and move to second reading, change to policy manual section 7-2.3, Student Attendance and Absences/Truancy. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, as we always do, we look carefully at our policy as well as our current practices. And recently, in looking at it, we realized that within our policy on student attendance, we have a small section there about makeup work, but it was not updated when the makeup work was updated in the student handbook, which you actually, as a board, vote on every June before we publish that. So, I'm recommending that we remove the section on makeup work out of your board policy, because it is in the student handbook under the attendance... us tremendously with our operating budget, so that we could, um, manage not to make as many reductions as we otherwise would've, so we know that likely items on the CIP may not be funded, those that are listed for the next fiscal year, but the community needs to recognize the issues that we face in terms of our facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve the CIP for fiscal year 15 through 19?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions there? Comments? Thank you. Could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Vote is passed, seven to zero.
Next up, consideration of approval of the first reading and move to second reading, change to policy manual section 7 dash 2.3, student attendance and absences slash truancy. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, as we always do, we, um, look carefully at our policy, as well as our current practices, and recently in looking at it, we realized that within our policy on student attendance, we have a small section there about makeup work, um, but it was not updated when the makeup work was updated in the student handbook, which, um, you actually, as a board, vote on every June before we publish that. Um, so I'm recommending that we remove the section on makeup work out of your board policy, because it is in the student handbook under your, the attendance information in the handbook, and because you, um, vote on that every June, if you do at some point determine you wanna change the makeup policy of the school division, you can do that as we adjust the handbook, um, and we know that you'll look at that annually, whereas you might not look at this exact section of policy annually. So, breeding, bringing to you first reading of that policy, um, and asking that you move that policy to second reading, so then you would vote on that in January. But again, remember, you'd look at the student handbook again in June in terms of makeup practices.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve first reading and move it to second reading?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
Any questions there?
Just FYI, the last sentence of the second paragraph of the section below that makes reference to it, so you can take that out as well.
Oh, so yeah, thank you. We'll have to dr, um, strike that as well. Thanks.
Nice catch, Ms. Rollins.
I read it.
We appreciate that.
I did.
It's focused on straight-throughs.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, anybody else? Call for a vote, please, Ms. Reimers?
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Vote passes seven to zero.
Thank you. And public comment, Dr. Parrish, should you kick us off, please?
Yes. Um, first of all, I wanna join you in thanking, um, the Procoson Education Foundation for their donation tonight, but for the thousands of dollars they've donated to our schools in the past five years during very challenging times, they've, they've made a real difference for our teachers and for our students. Um, and I think, uh, it certainly aligns well that we have community members out there doing community service for us, and our students are turning around and giving back to our community. So, I've always said that, um, Procoson is very special because of the community service that goes on, and we certainly demonstrated that this evening. I just wanna echo what Mr. Bowen said, um, that tomorrow at nine o'clock is a big moment for us, um, as the governor will be releasing his budget, and again, to echo what he said, um, we'll get detailed information from the Department of Education after the bud, the governor's release. So we will not likely, um, or not likely, we will not have specific information as to what it means for our school division until we get into January, especially because we've got winter break in between there, but at your next board meeting, um, we'll certainly be able to give you a presentation as to what the governor's budget means. Um, everybody does need to remember that that's the governor's budget, then we need to see what, um, the General Assembly members, um, propose to do as they all work through the budget process, but, um, we will remain optimistic that we'll maybe see some more support for K-12 education in, in the budget release in the coming day, and potentially as we move through the winter, but, um, we're certainly hopeful that we won't see the cuts we've seen in the last six years. Also, just a couple hours ago, I met with the Secretary of Education, um, Secretary Holton, as well as with Delegate Helsel, and a few teachers from, um, another local school division, and I just wanted to thank them publicly for both, um, the support that both of them are providing in our schools. Our conversation focused on, um, the assessment that we do with, um, some of our students with disabilities and the challenges that we face with some of those students, and so we're optimistic that, um, she will probably likely have some conversations in Richmond to see as we work with the federal government if we can change some of those assessment and accountability requirements that are coming, um, from the federal government as part of the, um, you know, Child Left Behind Act. And also, um, as you will not be surprised, I cannot go in a meeting with, um, anybody from the Richmond area and not discuss budget, so I certainly voiced, um, my concern for budget, both in terms of us needing resources for our school, we need to stop making the cuts, but also that we need to find ways to, um, support our teachers and staff, and certainly one of those areas would be an increase in compensation. So, it was, it was a very good meeting, though. And finally, I just hope that everyone out there has a wonderful, wonderful winter break, enjoy the two weeks while we have it, because Labor Day will come a little bit later in the year, next year, and so we won't anticipate a two-week break next year, but certainly will be nice this year. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sophie?
All right. So, at the primary school, two weeks ago, all the first graders traveled to Yorktown Victory Center as part of their Colonial Life Social Studies Unit. The students enjoyed a walking tour of Yorktown to discover how many Americans lived in the past. Last night, the kindergarten students performed for their families a selection of seasonal songs, one of which we heard tonight. Uh, PES said they're just winding down for the holidays, but they wish everyone a happy holiday. And at PMS on Thursday night, December 18th, there will be a parent informational meeting for the Governor's School for Science and Technology pre-admission. The meeting is at 6:00 PM in the auditorium. Procoson Middle School will hold at Spelling Bee on Wednesday, January 7th, at 2:30 in the auditorium. Go online or see our English teacher for a permission slip. PMS teachers and staff would like to thank the PTO for their luncheon and holiday cookie swap held this week, and they wish everyone a safe and happy winter break, and they'll see you January 5th. And then at the high school, uh, applications are currently being accepted for the academic programs that are offered through Virginia's Summer Residential Governor's School. 27 out of 44 students made all district course, 61 percent of the students. PHS ranked the third-highest percentage of students obtaining this honor out of 17 other auditioning high schools. To date, the following percentages of students have obtained status of one of the honor roles that are issued. 58 percent of ninth graders, 65 percent of 10th graders, 66 percent of 11th graders, and 71 percent of 12th, 12th graders. Alda Christman is in the PHS nominee for the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Conference, and Justin Bias is the PHS runner-up for this program. Shawnee Kumar is the PHS nominee for the UVA, UVA Jefferson Scholar. Kalani Morgan is the PHS nominee for the DAR Citizenship Award. Scott Porter is the PHS nominee for the Pamblin Virginia Tech Scholarship. Joyce Chow and Tyler Moore are the PHS nominees for the ASMC Scholarship. And as for sports, all the winter sports have just started matches and games and meets, although this is only the beginning of the season, everyone is off to a great start. So.
Thank you, ma'am.
Who do you, I believe? Uh, yes, we're, the girls' basketball team is three and two, and we have our next game tomorrow. Great.
Outstanding. Congratulations. And just so everyone knows, uh, Ms. Sidner had to leave to make, uh, the Cosson Holiday Concert. She has her youngest, who is a senior this year, playing in the band, and she does not want to miss her last holiday concert with a s, uh, child in the band.
Well done.
Yeah. Ms. Rollins, you're up.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Colley, for your information about the, uh, opportunities for service projects that our kids are involved in, that, that's, I love hearing about that, especially Heifer International, which is a very worthwhile organization. I hope everyone has a safe and happy holiday. Remember the reason that we have this holiday? I think is, uh, what's the child's name? Andrea, yes, um, reminded us about peace on earth. I think it's important that we remember that.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hux?
Thank you, Dr. Carter. No comment tonight.
Ms. Whitaker?
Just like to thank the children for coming tonight and giving us this wonderful performance, um, and thank the teacher and Ms. Poto, who, uh, organized this and, and did a great job with the kids. And I also just like to wish everybody a, uh, happy holiday season and a happy new year, and, um, party responsibly and make sure that you buckle up. Thank you. Had to get that in there.
Thank you, ma'am. Absolutely. Mr. Melton?
Uh, yes, I'm gonna go home tonight and re-watch the, uh, video, and I'm gonna try to learn the reindeer pokey. Uh, I had the, uh, chance to go, uh, to the school board training in Williamsburg, and I'll tell ya, I heard a quote from our 2014 Virginia Teacher of the Year, it was Melissa Porfarino. I hope I got that right. She said something very important, that teaching is the one profession that makes all other professions possible. My goodness, what a quote. And what our teachers do for our children, and what they have done for each of us in this room, is we would not be where we were today without great teachers. So, teaching is the one profession that makes all other professions possible, and hope everyone has a happy holiday.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cass?
Happy holidays, everyone. That it?
All right. Yeah, Mr. Melton, uh, to kinda piggyback on your quote, uh, if you ask somebody, who was the MVP from the 2012 World Series, or who won the Stanley Cup in, in 1980, most people would not be able to answer those questions, but if, if you ask them, uh, who's your favorite teacher, somebody immediately pops into your mind. So, there, there's, teachers make a difference, they really do. They change people's lives, uh, for the better. So we, for that, we appreciate it. Uh, had the opportunity to go hear the middle school chorus the other night, and Ms. Turoe did a wonderful job as her, uh, first year at Cosson Middle School as the chorus teacher. She had huge, hu, huge shoes to fill, and seemed like she's off to a good start, because, uh, those kids did a great job. And, uh, with that, just, uh, I hope everybody has a very, very safe holiday, and I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, or Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, or an otherwise generic, non-denominational winter break. How about that? And do we have any communications or other matters?
We do not.
Any material for board review?
No.
So, we will adjourn to our work session. Thank you very much.
Thank you.